Before we call our meeting to order tonight, our invocation will be given by Reverend Kent Allender with the Erlanger Church of Christ. Thanks for being with us again this evening.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for allowing us to be a part of this meeting. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings of life, our families, our friends, and Lord, for those willing to serve in government all the way from the federal all the way down to the local level. Lord, we ask that those who serve may always be reminded that they are in positions to serve, to serve their community, to serve the citizens of the community. May they be willing to lay aside those personal agendas for the good of those in the community. And, Lord, may we, the citizens, be reminded that these men and women have a tremendous responsibility, not just to us personally, but again to the whole community. Lord, we pray that you would grant the members of this council to have the wisdom, the knowledge, and all the resources necessary to make the best decisions possible for the city of Erlanger and we, the citizens of this great community. In the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
I'll call the August 5th, 2014 Meeting of Erlanger City Council to order. I ask that you all please stand and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Ms. Hoffman.
Mr. Longshore.
Present.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp.
Here.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Cahill. Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
We have a quorum. We may proceed. You should have received copies of the minutes of the regular council meeting from July 1st, 2014. Are there any corrections or additions to be made at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion by Mr. Blankenship, seconded by Mr. Brown. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now is the time for our special presentations. Chief Ahrens.
We have a 15-year pin that's going to be presented to Sergeant Mike Lemme. Mike Lemme, come up here. Mike was hired in 1999, was promoted to sergeant in 2004. He's one of our most senior sergeants in the sergeant staff. Mike was involved in field training, officer, SWAT team. He's still on the bike as a bike officer. He served two terms in the K-9 division. He trained with two dogs, and he's now in charge of the K-9. Chad Girdler is the new K-9 handler. Recently, one of his, I'm sure he'll tell you, is one of his best accomplishments is he just graduated from the FBI National Academy, 10-week management class that very few officers get the opportunity to attend, and he just graduated from that in, I think, April of 2014. He's currently in charge of the fleet manager. He takes care of all the cars in the police department, newly assigned. Mike, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate this honor. It's one of the greatest things I ever did was come here to work. One thing I never have to worry about is my job security and some of the things I had to deal with with some of my prior employers, and I thank you guys for that. I want to thank Chief Greg Sandel for hiring me, and Chief Mark Fields and Chief Bob Ahrens for everything they've done for me and their leadership. I really appreciate it, and I look forward to many more years here. Thank you very much.
Captain McQuary. Chief Whitaker being training, as we're always doing.
He's trying to educate himself.
Good.
We have one this evening, Rob. Mine coming up. Rob Cloker's been a part-time firefighter, paramedic with us for 10 years. Rob's beginning next month as one of our new rotational part-time guys, and he'll be here every ninth day for 24 hours. It's a new, exciting program for us, and Rob's definitely going to be an integral part of that for us. He currently works full-time at Central Campbell Fire District and holds the rank of lieutenant. We are extremely fortunate to be able to utilize his experience on our department. Rob's married to our administrative assistant, Linda Cloker, and has two children, Morgan and Grant, who are here with Rob this evening. I know Rob's very proud of his family, and I am very proud to call him a friend. Congratulations, Rob.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Now it's a time for the mayor's report. I want to begin by thanking everybody who has approached me and also members of the city staff for all the kind words and thoughts on the work that's been done and we're doing. It means a lot to me and it means a lot to the staff, and we certainly appreciate it. There's some good news to share with you all this evening. Most of you all saw, I hope, the article that was in the paper yesterday that talks about things that we've known about for some time here, and that's the development that's taken place in the city and the businesses that have chosen to come to the city of Erlanger. You all probably saw the McD Concrete, the Signature Hardware expansion, Sterling Cut Glass, Chipotle, Salvadori's moving into the old Ponderosa Building. There's a lot of things going on. There's a lot of momentum, and that's good to see, and hopefully we'll have some more good news on that here in the future. Some more good news, we got preliminary numbers, and it looks like that the realist, from the Property Value Administration, the real estate assessments in Erlanger have gone up a little bit as opposed to that decline we've been in for the past few years, which is going to take a lot of pressure off. And that's good news, because that's reflective of the progress that we're making in the city. And we also have a lot of new homes that have been built in the past year over in the neck of the woods where I live. Congratulations, Jim, to the Vioxx and Vioxx building that seems to be sprouting out of the ground over there on Erlanger Road. I know you all are looking forward to that. There's just enthusiasm toward redevelopment in our city, which is a good thing to see, because they've been working on it. The volunteer program that Mark Fields has announced has already been of some great assistance up in the front. When we've been down a couple people, and we've really been getting some good help from city volunteers. It's good to see Mark's program start to come to fruition and look forward to many good things in the future. And we had two road reconstruction projects that were finished this month. The Lake Street and Liberty Street reconstructions were done, which is, I mean, that's progress. Those streets were about to fall apart, so I'm feeling really good about that. And on another note, most of you all know that when it gets to the fall, my heart starts beating a little faster, because football season's about to be here. But not only that, we have, you know, all the kids are practicing marching band. Lloyd's band was right across the street as I came in. All the kids who do cross-country have been walking, running the streets. I see them on the highways. You know, two schools that have Erlanger facilities, Dixie Heights and Lloyd, I know they're very busy. And another school that has a lot of Erlanger connections, St. Henry, it quickens your heartbeats and renewed interest in the lives and successes of our young people. It's always as good for our community. And on that note, I have bought football cards from both Dixie and Lloyd players, so I'm being ecumenical there. I haven't been approached by a St. Henry cross-country person yet, so. But other than that, we're making great progress this month, and I'm really proud of the work that's been done by the staff and how hard they're working at getting all the needs of the citizens and the residents met. That's the end of my report. Move on to the reports of standing committees, public safety and police. Ms. Sudcamp and Ms. Pitts.
Sir, we have no report this evening, but the chief is in the house.
Chief Ahrens. Any questions of the committee or the chief? All right, we'll move on to public safety, fire, and EMS. Ms. Skidmore, Mr. Dunhoff.
Yes, Chief Whitaker is out of town, and Captain McQuary's here in his place, and I think he has a few words he wants to say to us.
Captain.
Thank you. Just have a couple things here this evening, real quick. First thing is kind of a sad thing, but we'll try to turn it into a little bit of a happy thing for us. It's a resignation letter from firefighter, paramedic Eric Riefenberger from full-time, but he'll be staying on with us part-time. I'd just like to read that to you. Dear Chief, Mayor Rouse, and members of city council, I am writing this letter to inform you on my resignation as a career firefighter, paramedic with Erlanger Fire EMS. I recently accepted a full-time position with Coal Rain Fire and EMS. My last day of employment as a full-time member will be Friday, August 15th, 2014. I wanted to express my appreciation for the opportunity I've been given here at Erlanger. I have been here for two and a half years and have had some valuable experiences and met some influential people. Erlanger has been an integral part of my development as a firefighter, paramedic. I truly believe that with Chief Whitaker at the helm, this department is on its way to greatness. I believe it is obvious this city cares about its employees. They have shown this through the benefits they offer and the committees that have been developed to gain and retain future employees. This is why it took a lot of thought and made it hard for my wife and I to come to this decision. It's my intention to continue employment here as a part-time firefighter, paramedic, as long as I am able. Again, I want to thank the Fire EMS Department and the city of Erlanger for my opportunity here. Sincerely, Eric Riefenberger. Even though we won't see him every third day, he'll be here every ninth day as one of our new part-time rotational guys, so. We're not losing them altogether. Eric's a great employee, and it does stink that he's leaving us full-time, but, you know, he started at Coal Rain, and he's just kind of going home, if you will. So. Finally, the other thing that we wanted to announce this evening was that we were the recipient of the 2013 Assistance to Firefighters Grant. We are awarded $76,500 for a new vehicle exhaust system for Station 1. Similar to what we were awarded last year for Station 3, we hook our trucks up and run them inside the bay, and emits all the exhaust outside.
Nobody gets gassed.
Yeah, exactly.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any questions of the committee or captain?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next is Public Works. Mr. Cahill and Mr. Brown.
Yes, everybody should have received a report from Mr. Bogart, and we do have two things outstanding. One we'll need consideration from the council. So it's time to renew our HVAAC Preventive Maintenance Agreement with Air Force One. As per the provisions of the contract, as long as both parties are in agreement, term can be extended by a period of one year. We've received and reviewed documentation from Air Force One agreeing to extend the term of the agreement starting September 1st, 2014, to August 31st, 2015 at a cost of $26,240. This is a $464 increase from the current agreement. This is a budget of item. It's a recommendation of the Public Works staff and the committee to renew the agreement with Air Force One, as we found them to be a reliable service provider.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? I know Air Force One has been here working their tails off all the time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll enter that contract. Mr. Brown.
And we also received, Mr. Bogart received a request from Ed Nordlow on behalf of the residents of Woodland Hills that a traffic light be installed at the intersection of Turkeyfoot and Woodland Hills Drive. This will require the review and approval of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, as they have authority over, Turkeyfoot is a state road. It's the recommendations of the Public Works staff and the Public Works Committee that this be forwarded to the Kentucky Transportation Committee for review and study.
I saw that, and we'll do that. Make sure they get it and they can do the study.
And Mr. Bogart is in the gallery.
Mr. Bogart. Any questions of the committee or Mr. Bogart? Thank you. The next committee is administration. Mr. Burke, Mr. Longshore.
Yes, sir. I've got a few things here. We had a meeting on the self-storage tax amendment, and as a committee, we're going to recommend we leave that as is. We had a meeting on the Historical Society about the city combining with them and taking care of that.
That's the memorandum of understanding.
And the committee recommends we go along with that. And we had a cable franchise committee, which I guess is progress. I don't know if that's even done yet. Is that?
It's on the agenda for a second reading tonight.
We're ready.
Then it'll be done shortly. All right. And let's see, we had a Drees ordinance amendment request meeting, and as a committee, we recommend we vote it down, and then we'll make a motion after the reading, see how it goes on what we recommend. Let's see. Policies and procedures meeting, progress on that, and the volunteer program committee meeting, I guess progress on that. Chief, Mark, you're still working on that, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, that's all we got.
Just want to ask for a committee meeting on the 19th. Have a presentation of the proposed property tax rates, along with a special meeting immediately following for the first reading of an ordinance to get that moving.
Yeah, so we can't do anything on property taxes at all until we get to put the PVA, and we just got the PVA information, so.
Yeah, she didn't have it early this morning, so.
And Ms. Andrus is in the house. Do you have anything to add?
She's wanting to go, girl.
Mayor, you touched on it earlier about the volunteer program, and I just would like to, last week, we had volunteers come in and help us out, because we were very shorthanded, and I would just like to recognize those volunteers. Pam Girdler, Tammy Dorgan, and Kathy Cahill, they were a God-sent to us. They really did help out, and it just worked out very well, and I wanted to say thank you to them.
Very good. Anything else?
No.
Any questions of the committee or Ms. Andrus? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the finance committee. Mr. Hyatt, Mr. Blankenship.
Staff has been working on the preparation of the audit work papers for fiscal year 2014. The auditors are scheduled to begin their fieldwork in late September or early October, and we'd also like a finance committee meeting on August 19th to discuss revisions to the city's investment policy.
And Greg Engelman's in the house.
Mr. Engelman. Any questions of the committee or Mr. Engelman? Seeing none, we'll move on to Friendship City Networking. Ms. Kyle, Ms. Cahill.
And before I give my report, I want to thank everybody for the prayers and thoughts that you extended towards our family when he had his bypass surgery, and he's doing fine. So, he told me to thank all of you.
And he's up walking around, didn't he?
He's up walking around, so it's really wonderful. Okay, we have quite a few events coming up for August. The first one is Tishner Block Party, Friday, August 15th, and that's going to be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Tishner Middle School Common Area. The city of Erlanger and the Historical Society will be participating in the Tishner Middle School Block Party. Families and friends are invited to attend, as the PT-3 Committee and the Youth Service Center at Tishner Middle School will be providing free food and music. Local businesses, organizations, school athletic teams, and clubs will be on hand to share information about the upcoming events. The next one is on Saturday, August 16th, and this is a first-ever event. It's going to be at the Depot Museum Picnic Shelter, and the Depot Museum is actually having their first yard sale. They're cleaning house, and they're going to be selling books, journals, magazines, historical preservation, travel, genealogy, fiction, vintage scrapbooks, frames, Coca-Cola items, model train stuff, postcards, prints, local memorabilia, baseball cards, and more will be available to add to your collections at home. And all the proceeds will go to benefit the Erlanger Historical Society to continue the preservation of all our local and regional heritage. And if you need more information, we have a phone number here. It's 727-2630. And then, of course, this is an annual event, and I believe this is the 10th one, Sunday, August 24th. It starts at the Erlanger branch of the Kenton County Library at 8:00 in the morning, and that's going to be the annual 5K. The route is easy, it's an easy trot through the city's central residential area. There's going to be prizes and refreshments following the race, so come on out and get your fit on. Excuse me. Register online at runningtime.net or download a form from the city's website at ci.erlanger.ky.us. And the next big event, our annual Heritage Day celebration, this is the 23rd event that we've had. It's going to be on Sunday, September 21st, at the Depot Museum from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. It's a wonderful event. I've been going the last few years with students from St. Henry's to volunteer, and I usually stay, and I have found that it's very enjoyable. There's so much going on, it's unbelievable. This year's celebration is going to feature the businesses of Erlanger, from celebrating Boone Kenton Lumber's 100th year to welcoming new businesses, and we'll be highlighting many of our longtime businesses throughout the park. And then they always have the crafters, the food booths, political stomping this year, since it is an election year, and they have the carriage rides, which are always a lot of fun. So, it's a wonderful event for families, so get together and come on down to the depot. The Historical Society right now is taking applications for vendors. This application can be found on the city's website at ci.erlanger.ky.us, or you can call 727-2630. Are speaking with Pat Hahn directly at 727-8959. So, reserve your space today, as there are a limited number of spots available, and usually they fill up very quickly. And then Kathy's going to tell us about what we did in July.
The joint was a very busy month, outdoor events for the city of Erlanger, and the Summer Parks Program hosted four events throughout the month, beginning with Wings of Wonder Bird Show, and that was presented by the Cincinnati Zoo, and it was from the hillside of Flagship Park. It annual entertained young and old alike with penguins, falcons, owls, and Sam, the 14-year-old bald eagle, who's the bald eagle that sails from home plate, I guess, to at the outfield at the Reds games. So, it was very interesting to see him. Then next, we had Sendini the Magician, and she also appeared at the Flagship Park. A large crowd enjoyed seeing her show, and many attendees were called up to assist her in performing her tricks. At both Wings of Wonder Show and Magic Show, cone ice was enjoyed as a special treat, and it was really nice to have them there. The kids were really excited about getting their cone of ice on a hot day. The next thing, we had the fishing derby. It was held in the morning following the Sendini performance. And while not many children attended, great fun was had by all. There were a few photos pasted on the city's Facebook page, or the catches of the day, from the first time-ever catch of a large-mouthed bass, but more from the highly-seasoned fisherperson who caught several blue gills and catfish, my granddaughter. This year, the city had the assistance and expertise of the Northern Kentucky Fly Fishers Association by way of field and stream store. The Fish Flyers Association provided all the poles and hook removals necessary to get us through the morning, and through its partnership, next year, the derby is sure to be attractive for young persons. And we'd also like to thank Ralph Sidner, who is a Public Works employee, who has been with us all these years through the fishing derby, and he's the one that always was baiting the hooks and taking them off and letting, make sure that every child left had caught a fish, and we really appreciate him helping. The Summer Park Program wrapped up with the season with a swim night at Silver Lake Recreation Center. This year, the cities of Erlanger and Elsmere partner to host the event for residents of both cities. It was beautiful, but a seasonably cool evening, with a total of 40 families came out to swim in, probably in the water park. I want to thank Becky for hosting all these events for the city, and it was extremely cold, but there were a lot of kids there, mostly parents sitting on the side watching as the kids were all getting froze, but it was really nice. Becky's in the audience now. Do you have anything else?
You have anything, Becky? Any questions of the committee or Ms. Hopkins? Yes, Kevin.
Just got a question on the time of the Heritage Day yard sale.
Oh, yeah, I think I forgot to mention that. That's from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Saturday, August 16th. August 16th, 10:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the afternoon. So, that's the first time they've ever done that, and I think that would be really interesting to see what they have. If you've ever been to the depot, it's wonderful. I mean, they've got everything in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the reports of special committees, the Cleanup Erlanger Committee, Ms. Pitts and Mr. Cahill. Do you have anything to report this evening?
We actually did have a meeting on July 28th, and just reporting progress, right, Mr. Fields?
Very good.
Did you want to report on the progress of 29 Erlanger Red? And we're not going to do anything to change the ordinance?
Yeah, we're not going to change the ordinance, so that's what we looked at. That was a discussion we had, and it would be too difficult to enforce what we would need to do.
I know you all spent a lot of time looking at that and trying to come up with solutions, and I appreciate your effort. Okay. Any questions of the cleanup committee? Then finally, the Friendship Garden Committee. Ms. Sudcamp.
Yes, sir. I report progress also. The final list of the names he has gone to print.
Very good. Any questions? You all have heard the reports of standing and special committees. I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, seconded by Mr. Longshore. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any reports from representatives to any of the community groups that we participate in this evening? Yes.
Kenton County Alliance is still very active in trying to address the heroin issue, and I don't know if anybody saw, but Casey's Law, the lady with the, who lost her son to a heroin overdose, she's going around the county, I think it's probably the Kenton-Boone-Campbell, and she, they have restored a Volkswagen, I forget, they don't call them a van, but whatever the older van is, camper, and she's, they've restored that, and that's what they're going around town in. Very active in that.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, now it's time for our reports of city operations. First, the city engineer, Mr. Vioxx.
Only thing I have this evening, sir, is I think it went out to all the members of council and the activity behind the city building with the drying up of the problem we've had in the city building, the contractors, backhoes sitting out there. I guess you saw it when you came in tonight. They're going to start tomorrow. They wanted to start today, but we told them because of this meeting, we want them to hold off to tomorrow. But the back parking lot's going to be pretty much limited for a period of time, so you might want to think about parking in the front or parking at the Port of Education Building for some time if you normally park in the back. That's all I have, sir.
Maybe, just maybe, at some point in the future, we will get the water out of the basement of this building.
Hopefully.
Wouldn't that be nice? Any questions of Mr. Vioxx?
I just have a comment. If the parking gets really limited, the Erlanger Church of Christ across the street is a parking ride, so that would kind of be available.
Okay, good, thank you. Make sure Mr. Allender does that. Okay, our city attorney, Mr. Wickman.
Nothing but the ordinances, Mayor.
Questions of our city attorney. Thank you. Our city administrator, Mr. Fields.
I would like to add a couple, or request a couple items to be placed on the August 19th committee meeting. I've been meeting with tank officials, county officials, and Elsmere officials about a proposed new bus route. I'd like to bring you all up to speed on that one and get some input as to whether we want to participate in that or not. And also, we would like to present the first city operations yearly report at that meeting for everyone. So, those two things, we'd like to add to that agenda if we possibly could. That's all I have.
Any questions of Mr. Fields? You've heard the reports of city operations. I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion by Mr. Burke, seconded by Mr. Dunoff. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any correspondence this evening, Ms. Hoffman?
Yes, sir. We received a card from Regis Huth. He is a employee with the fire department. He said, "Words cannot express what the city family has done for my family in our time of need. Your generosity will never be forgotten." I don't remember what month it was, but he lost his mother in a tragic car accident. And the Mayor Rouse received a card from the parents of the young lady that won our scholarship this year. It says, "Dear Mayor Rouse, Vince and I would like to thank you so much for coming to Villa Madonna to present Gabrielle with her scholarship, and what an awesome honor and surprise for Gabrielle to have been given the key to the city and to have a proclamation read designating May 23rd, 2014, as Gabrielle's Day in Erlanger. What a wonderful surprise for our daughter. Your presentation was truly the highlight of the evening. You will never know just how much it meant to Gabrielle and us as well. I know she would very much like to come next year to speak at the council meeting where the next recipient of the scholarship will be awarded. In the meantime, we wish you the very best and continued success. We are proud to have you as our mayor. Sincerely, Linda and Vince Noder Giacomo." And I don't know if I pronounced that right or not, so I apologize if I did.
Great, yes.
I mess it up every time I try to say it. Any member of council have any correspondence? Truly, the highlight of that evening at Villa Madonna was seeing all those graduates dressed up in those white gowns.
Oh, I know.
I mean, that's, you know, I'm used to going to Lloyd in the cap and gown, that's all nice, and they're like, they're going to the cotillion. It looked really nice. and they're like, they're going to the cotillion, you know, it looked really nice. That was a fun evening. Any other correspondence? Okay, now's the time we reserve in our agenda for public citizens and public comments. We have a number of folks who have signed up to address city council tonight. I would ask that all those of you who wish to speak, you're welcome to do so, try not to be repetitive, try to keep it around three minutes because we got two pages full of people. The first, I'm going to mess up the names here, Betty Naze, K-N-A-E-Z? Caneely, is that it? I don't have my glasses on. 931 Borderlands, that's you, come on, come on up to the microphone.
I didn't want to speak.
Okay, all right. That's fine with me. Louis Miller. Mr. Miller, would you like to speak?
I'd like to, but I didn't know what I was talking about.
Oh.
To write me a $100 check.
We'll meet you at the Squally's in about a half hour.
This might be quicker than I thought. Each speaker is a last three minutes, that's all right. Okay, how about Kathy Zhang? You'd like to speak?
I have a suggestion.
Yes?
Ask who would like to speak because we all have the same thing.
Okay. Well, I'm going to go through the list because that's what I promised I'd do. Bill Goulet.
Same.
All right. Donna Goulet.
Same.
John, is it Kerb Cubel? Cubel?
Sir.
All right. Carol Minehart. Yes, ma'am.
I want to speak about Lakemont today.
Yes, come on. Sure.
Come on down.
Take it the long way around. Also, take the long road home.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for coming.
I was at the committee meeting about Lakemont last week and I heard Mr. Schottelkotti in the board speak and I really was hoping that Mr. Schottelkotti would be here tonight, but I don't see him. But I know that the, they mentioned at the board that Mr. Schottelkotti made a presentation at the April meeting. I was at the April meeting. I didn't hear a presentation. When did he present?
I'll ask him, he's back here in the back.
Did he present in closed session? I didn't hear him. But anyway, I looked at the minutes to refresh my memory. The minutes were revised as of July 9th from the April meeting. And I wasn't the only one there, I haven't found anybody yet who heard Mr. Schottelkotti's presentation. So that was, that was my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Nordlow.
My name's Ed Nordlow. I'm here to talk a little bit about the Erlanger taxes and particularly some of the things that have been said in the recorder newspapers, there's been a number of letters to the editor and most of it pertains to taxes. Mayor Rouse had an editorial where he was talking about Erlanger rates and how they fit smack in the center of the tax rates for this area. And I have some information that really does not agree with what you said. And I'm taking my information from the Northern Kentucky community profile.
The what?
Profile, P-R-O-F-I-O-L-E. I ended up, the taxes that were, the cities that the tax rates were lower than Erlanger and higher than Erlanger, and I found that out of 36 cities, Erlanger had the seventh highest tax rate. Now you said it was smack in the middle and my figures discount that, so I was wondering where you got your figures.
The Northern Kentucky Area Development District.
From where?
The Northern Kentucky Area Development District.
All right.
You keep the official records?
We seem, we have a disagreement, I'm taking from what I have. So I even wrote a letter to the editor that may be in this week's issue on this whole subject. So we'll wait and see where it goes. Thank you.
When it comes, we'll read it.
Please.
When it's printed, we'll read it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike Schottelkotti signed up, Mike, you here? You going to speak?
I'm going to go with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike Schottelkotti with the Dries Company. To answer the question of the lady that had come up previously, I was at the April HOA Board Meeting, it was the, an open meeting, it was not an executive session, so I'm not sure what other conversation went on that I was missed, but I was certainly, certainly there. I'm here to, tonight regarding the Lakemont ordinance that you're going to be taking action on. The action tonight is, was presented to correct the original ordinance 2360 to allow patio homes of new design to be a minimum of 1,500 square feet, not 1,700 as being interpreted by the zoning administrator. I believe there's been a lot of misinformation spread through the community about reducing home size, but the specifications that were identified in the material that the Dries Company had presented to the city were the same as existing in Lakemont since the very beginning. In fact, there's a number of homes in the windborne section, the patio home section of Lakemont that are at or near the 1,500 square foot size. So we're not asking for anything other than what has been happening in the Lakemont community itself. If you examine the documents recommended by the Planning Commission and included in ordinance 2360 adopted by the Planning Commission or by the city back in 2011, it's very clear that the minimum that was adopted was 1,500 square feet. The issue comes about because of the interpretation that the zoning administrator is making regarding some sample homes that we had presented as the style of homes that were going to be built in Lakemont. A lot of comment had been made at the previous committee meeting about what Mr. Dries said and promised and all of that, but I believe that's, that's really far from the truth as Mr. Dries spoke very sparingly at the committee meeting. I made the presentation, I was the main presenter and I made no such statement as far as the minimum size house in the patio home area being other than 1,500 square feet. I think council, as they ask yourself, why would we have made such a commitment of 1,700 when all the information in the documents that were presented to Planning Commission and council identified a 1,500 square foot minimum for the, for the patio home area? I appreciate council's time in listening to me. I know it's hard to make tough decisions, but we certainly hope that you will look back at what Dries actually submitted and pass the modified ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tyson Hermes.
I've come to you this evening to talk about something nice. I wanted to extend my thanks to council and mayor. I live in Brightleaf subdivision and the new light that's at the corner of Brightleaf and Turkeyfoot is fantastic. It's, there are so many mornings, there were so many mornings when we were trying to pull out of there and especially when it was rainy and you just could not tell with the bend in the road, what lane the people were in and how fast they were coming and it's really made a huge improvement. And it's nice also because we can see the apartments coming up across the street in Erlanger and I hear there's going to be.
Elsmere.
Oh, I'm sorry, in Elsmere, excuse me. And there's going to be.
Couldn't have approved them. My good friend Marty.
I knew it was Elsmere.
My good friend Marty Gohnoff's mayor over there and we've, and we've talked about it.
I understand there's going to be 200 more units back in there and so that's going to be adding that much more traffic across that intersection. And then also I hear that there is a developer talking to the lists who own the 60 acre parcel.
Philip Farm left back there.
On, yeah, on Narrows.
I knew that was coming.
So it's nice that, you know, we can kind of rest our minds and knowing that there's infrastructure there ahead of time, that can handle that. So thank you there.
You know, Tyson, dealing with the state highway department, first of all, it's one of the more maddening things that you have to do in government and it's kind of like the immovable force, but you keep pressure on them. We had, we had to do that because picking up dead bodies at the bottom of the Narrows Hill before they built the new Turkeyfoot. Now we didn't, we didn't want any do that again at the intersection of Brightleaf and Turkeyfoot and we pushed and pushed and everybody on our staff did, all of our council members did, you all did, and eventually we got it done. And that's the only way you can, you can do it. So I appreciate the kind words. I know I missed a couple court appearances because trying to turn right, coming from Sherborn.
Right.
Narrows, trying to turn right and couldn't do it, so. And I can imagine what all those people in the apartment are going to do, coming down the hill from Elsmere, trying to turn left on Turkeyfoot with all the rush hour traffic coming in from Beach Grove and all that area. Good luck.
Right.
But thank you.
Right. There was one other item too. I wanted to see, I know there's an ordinance that's supposed to be read this evening regarding this, the Dries ordinance.
Yes.
Is that going to be to clarify this square footage?
Yeah, that's the one that they've requested that we amend what we did a few months ago.
That Dries has requested or that the residents?
Dries requested it, yeah. We wouldn't be here if they didn't request it.
Is there going to be another ordinance for the residents to clarify that it is, if that's what you decide this evening, that it's going to be 1,700, 12 square feet instead of the 1,500 that it keeps?
If on the vote, make a motion on that.
Okay.
Right, we hope to clear it up tonight.
Right. Great, thank you.
Mike Chisenhall. How you doing, Mike?
Fine, thank you.
You showed up, you're back there hiding in the back room. I said, well, he was here last week, now you come in and sit in the back.
Well, I got here late and I couldn't find a place to park, so it's a good thing. Thank you all. Thank you for allowing me to speak, thank you for the committee meeting that we had last week to at least discuss this issue. I just, I really don't understand why, if Mr. Schottelkotti was the one who presented what we did in September of 2011, why did he present houses with a list? Because on the sheets that we have, it says proposal. It doesn't say, "We might build this, we're thinking about this," it says, "This is the proposal." And that's what they proposed that night. The list with 1,500 square feet does not have proposal on it. So why even bring that up if you're not going to build that? And it's like the old bid and switch thing, you know, it's going to, we're going to, this is what we're going to do, but not really. We're going to give you this 1,500 square feet, we're kind of keeping off to the side. So I hope we can clear this up and be done with this for good. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Thank you, Mike. I'll be back in a couple of months. That's the last of our speakers. Let me say one thing before we move on. I'm glad that Mike contacted people and he brought, he got this thing, brought it to our attention. By your involvement, it keeps us educated and, and I'm just glad that you all are here and I'm glad that Mike said, "Whoa, whoa, wait a minute." And we did, and it'll be decided on tonight, but the more of you who get involved in issues like this, the better, the easier it is for us and we really appreciate it. Sometimes we're in a vacuum up here and it's a lot easier when we hear from the people who live in town. Okay, the next is Bidge, do we have any bids this evening, Ms. Hoffman?
I signed up.
Who's that?
Bill Tomar.
I also signed up.
I've.
I was very early to sign up.
I did see Mr. Tomar sign the sheet back there when he came in.
I've had, they gave me two, you're not, go ahead. I trust you and I just don't have it on my sheet.
I trust you.
Okay, my first, first thing, I really don't trust the city. I live on Locust Street in Erlanger. I can sit in my garage, because I'm laid off, I work for the federal government, I'm laid off, I can sit there, 35 cars come down Queen and Locust and maybe two might stop. And of those two, they probably aren't city workers, they don't stop either. I'm tired of it. I've talked to Officer Lowe's, I've talked to the lady cop, I don't recall her name, Blake or Brake or something, I talked to her, I talked to two other policemen. I went to the city building one day to the police department to talk to somebody, I waited up there 45 minutes, nobody ever did come out to spend any time with me. I finally left, I said, "The hell with it." Stop signs in Erlanger, nobody stops. If you go down Queen Street and you come to Erlanger Road, it says, "Cross traffic doesn't stop." Well, they don't stop anywhere anyway. What good does it do if the police, the fire department rides through them, the police half the time run right through the one up on Erlanger Road? I damn near got hit on the way up here tonight because somebody ran a stop sign. If the police in the city aren't going to take care, what's that, that stoplight out there on, on Turkeyfoot Road ain't going to do any good if people are going to run right through it because nobody forces the city laws. It's terrible, I'm done with that. Then you call Mr. Bogart about a pothole. There's a pothole there, 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 they come out and fill one of them and leave. And I asked him, I said, "What the heck's the problem?" He won't even return my phone calls, I gave up on him, I won't talk to him anymore. But I went out and filled it myself. Well, and there was a sewer lid there and they said, "Well, sanitation department, if somebody's going to come out and take care of it." It took them two months to do anything about it. I mean, it's ridiculous. I filled it myself now, I don't even call the city because it's a joke. On Dixie Highway, the manhole covers, right up Dixie Highway, I broke a rear shock spring so far in the last year and a half, I broke an idler arm because the manhole covers and you get right down there by Speedway, there's two, two boxes on the curb about so wide and about that deep, you hit them, that's where I broke my idler arm. That cost me $300, my rear shackle cost me $500. The state, the state of Kentucky says, "When you go from one, when you go from one surface to another, back to that surface again, you're not allowed to have more than an inch drop." They don't even go by the law and the city and all these other cities around here don't do anything about them breaking their own law, it's a state law. They don't abide by it and these cities don't make them either. I'm tired of it.
How's the city of Erlanger going to force a state?
You can go to the state, you gotta, if I go to the state, they blow it off, "Hell yeah, we'll take care of it." If the cities, when they, especially when they resurface these roads, if they make sure that this, go to the state department, I know a guy works for the state department, he says the cities would come to us and tell them they want these roads smoother, they'll be smoother. They just did it down there in Fort Mitchell, when they, well, Crestview Hills, I stretched through there. Crestview went to them and told them, "We want these roads to be better than what they are." You're breaking the state law by not making sure the roads are done right. But the stop signs in the city are terrible. It doesn't mean stop, it means floor. Won't we take all the stop signs down since we're not, and we'll scrap them? Let's just scrap them because nobody's stopping them anyway and they don't do nothing about it. I'm tired of it. So maybe I'll start not stopping. So maybe I'll start not stopping at stop signs, too, and see how I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else signed up?
My name's Walt Hughes. I was driving southbound on Dixie Highway, and in the spirit of football, my car was tackled by a grocery cart from Silver Lakes Kroger.
Came down the hill and got?
Came down the hill, and I went to slow down because I saw somebody running, so it didn't hit me very hard. It did hit the front end because the person was about to run out into the road. So I slowed down real good for it and came to a complete stop, and then looked in front of them. There was a grocery cart right there, and it hit my car, went into the northbound lane, and the person slowed down and stopped because they saw me stop, and I was waving in the windshield trying to get them to stop. I went up to the, the Kroger employee was the one chasing after the car. They asked me to go see the manager. The manager acted like, "It's not your fault, nothing, you did nothing wrong, we'll take care of this." Well, they sent me to their insurance company, and the insurance company said they reviewed the video, and they're not at fault. They, no Kroger employee did anything, and they're not responsible for it. And when I asked them, "Can I see a copy of the video?", they told me, "The stores has the, the right over that because it's, individual stores have that right." I told the store manager that, they turned me down, that you would have to do it. They told me to get a court order. Now, what, the other part I forgot to tell you was when I drove up to the lot, me and my wife did, my wife was in the car, and we got out and we waited for the employee to come up and put the cart in the cart corral, and my wife had to yell at her because the cart, cart rolled right back out of the cart corral. She had to physically move the cart corral just to keep the cart in there. And my, my opinion is, they've been there for how many years? And if you look down that driveway, there is not one thing that can deter a cart from coming out and hitting somebody. Me, I was lucky because I'm pretty somewhat of a safe driver, and I could see out of the corner of my eye somebody running, almost running into the street, so that's what made me stop. But somebody else is going to get ran over, some kid on the sidewalk's going to get pushed out into the traffic, and they blew me off, and they've been there that long, and they have not done nothing, so they're just blowing off everybody. I mean, I know they're only going to be there another two years, I found that out, but they still need to do something. And if they're neglect, the city attorney needs to look into it, and they got reference to look at my video because they have it on file now because they got to keep it for so many days because I'm going to go after them, too. But it's just that if they were innocent, they would show me the video, because I know I would. I'd be prayed down the street, I'd put it in my driveway, in my garage, you know, show everybody, "Hey, I'm innocent." But they're like, "Get a court order to see it." And something needs to be done about it because if not, somebody's going to get really hurt because we got, we got people texting and everything, and they get hit, they go into oncoming traffic, somebody's going to get killed. And it's a real big issue as far as I'm concerned.
Mark, when you were police chief, did you ever, did that ever happen that you can recall?
It doesn't happen very often. I think if you remember and you go on down when Kmart was in its heyday.
Oh, they, they, when they admitted to it, they admitted that this has happened before, we're trying to do something about it, but in my opinion, if they blow me off, they're, they're going to blow everybody off.
Again, if you remember when Kmart was in its heyday, there were many, many carts down on Dixie Highway from that, and it's something that we've been dealing with on Dixie Highway for an awful long time. You cannot help what people do, the public, that they come out and they put their carts or whatever, how to hold those people responsible for them to come down. I don't know of any design along the highway anywhere that, that has that, I guess, protection from carts rolling off of those hills. I'm not saying it's ideal to do that. That's why we have insurance, hopefully, and I'm not playing this off as it's not a dangerous situation, but hopefully your insurance company will go after Kroger's to get that if in fact that.
Well, my insurance company, I got full coverage, and they said they'll just pay to have the damage fixed, but I still got my deductible to pay.
That's what, we have the no-fault state in Kentucky, and that's between the insurance companies.
But when someone gets killed, they're going to do something. Or someone gets seriously injured, they're going to do something, then?
I'm not sure.
I mean, it's, if a tree falls on your house and you didn't plant that tree there, that tree was there before your house, you're not responsible for that tree. But if you plant that tree and it falls on somebody's house, you're responsible for it.
Again, I'm not sure of any designs, and we can ask the city attorney sitting right here, whether or not we can enact something that would put those protections in those parking lot designs when they are originally planned to prevent those things from coming down. I'm not sure.
Well, then, it's their, their design flaw, then.
I'm not saying there's not a design flaw, there may be. I'm not saying that at all.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I don't know what we can do as a city, you know, after the fact of a development of whether or not we can enact something. That would be a.
Well, you have, like I said, there is a video on file now that you guys can observe and see if they're, if they're doing anything wrong.
I've seen their videos several. Sir, I've seen their videos several times over the years, and I'm not sure it has the entrance to Dixie Highway. Now, maybe it does, but if it does, I'm unfamiliar with it, maybe Chief Aaron's in the back is familiar with that, but I know they have some of the top parking lot on their video cameras. I'm not sure they have the video of Dixie Highway. I've never seen it.
Well, they got a video right there in the corner that I can see all the way down. That's what they told me, they, they could see that they didn't know nothing wrong.
We've seen video of the parking lot before, and I'm not so sure I've ever seen the entrance on there. It may be there, it, it may be there. I would suggest that if you, if they were telling you to get a quarter, I would get it very quickly because I don't know what prohibits anybody from destroying their own video.
Do you have counsel, private counsel? Do you have an attorney?
No, I don't, not at this time.
Now, they have a, a facility that uses things with wheels, and their parking lot is on an incline, and gravity works everywhere around the earth that I'm aware of, and so things that are on wheels that go downhill tend to go downhill until something stops them, which would seem to place some liability on Kroger's privately to do the, to work for you. Your insurance company should have our inter, intercompany arbitration with their insurance company, which would be done behind the scenes, and you won't know about it, but the, I imagine your insurance company will get their money back for what they've done in this case. But if, but thank you for bringing it to our attention, and I haven't seen it from Kroger's, and I've been here for a long time, but I did see it from Kmart years ago.
Well, Kmart did have to pay for all the damage to the cars that were that the carts rolled down the hill.
And you remember, the insurance companies are not in business to pay claims, they're in business to make money. So they're going to say no forever. I'm a plaintiff's attorney, so you can tell that. They're going to say no forever until somebody says, "Yes, you will," which is usually a jury. So that, sometimes that's what you have to do. But thanks for coming in tonight.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else? All right, very good. I don't, I don't like the concept of driving down Dixie Highway and being attacked by carts. That's, that's awful. Okay, do we have any work in progress this evening? Do we have any reports of any new business for the good and welfare of the city? Okay, we'll go on to legislation then. First, Mr. Wickman, the Driz ordinance.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending Earlanger ordinance 2360 to include additional specifications and the limits on the revision and redesign of the crest born home sites, and attached to the ordinance is the language that was proposed by Driz in 2011, which includes the 1,500 square foot minimum living area.
There would be a motion, I would accept a motion to adopt the ordinance and order it published. If there is no motion, the ordinance dies. Is there a motion to adopt an order published? No, sir, the ordinance is dead. We'll move on to the next one.
It's an ordinance of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, electing to enforce the parking regulations of the City of Earlanger, or the regulations of city regulating parking, standing or stopping upon the public streets and ways within the City of Earlanger as civil violations pursuant to the procedures set forth in KRS 82.600 to 82.640, and establishing monetary penalties for such violations, and establishing a hearing board defined by KRS 82.600.
It's the second reading, the motion to be adopted, order published. Is there a motion by Mr. Blankenship, second by Mr. Burke? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Longshore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Ah, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries. I will sign the ordinance. Mr. Wickman.
It's an ordinance of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, granting a renewal of a franchise to Insight Kentucky Partners, Roman Number Two LP, to operate a cable communication system within the territorial limits of the city, authorizing and directing the mayor of the city to execute a franchise agreement to operate a cable communication system between the city and Insight Kentucky partnerships, and by summary, it simply grants two Insight a 15-year franchise for the operation of a cable business. And the use, not.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It, the primary purpose of it is permit them to use the city streets to operate their system.
You took a breath, so I thought you were done.
I, I thought I was, too, but I forgot some.
I'll ask the city clerk to note in the minutes, the first reading of that ordinance. Do we have a municipal order?
Yes, sir. It's a municipal order of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the reappointment of the city administrator to perform the functions of the city alcoholic beverage control administrator.
Is there a motion that we adopt that, that municipal order? Motion by Mr. Burke, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? This is more work for Mr. Fields. We like that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any other legislation this evening?
No, sir.
The policy and procedure is not ready yet, right?
That is correct.
Now, I'm going to take a second to reopen old business in case there is a motion. You want to send that to committee so we can crank, crank it out?
I feel that, I wouldn't want to go back to committee because conflicting, it was brought to our attention by many a people.
Right.
Even by yourself and other attorneys.
Absolutely.
That it's conflicting where we're saying one thing and the proposal's saying something else. So I'd want to see it go back and be corrected properly.
Want to ask Frank to, to address that and, and come back with another?
I'm sorry, what?
The ordinance?
Yeah, clean the language up and all that.
What is it we're talking about?
The Driz.
The Driz. Where they're saying that it's 2360.
Okay.
You know how it reads to, everybody's seeing it, that's why we had to.
I think what they're asking is if we can make the interpret, if we can make the ordinance fit the current interpretation.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. I understand what you're talking about.
We can remove the ambiguity.
Okay.
All right. We'll do the motion. Thank you.